All right. I call the meeting to order at 6:01 on October 5th. Planning Board Meeting. My name is Stephanie Slush. I'm the Chair of Planning Board. I have Jimmy Tarr to my right, who's our alternate Chair. And I have Lee Bell all the way at the end over there. We also have our Select Board joining, or two of our Select Board members joining us today, our Town Administrator and our Administrative Assistant Gerard Bueno. Before we get to the joint meeting piece, we're going to open the floor to public forum. This is an opportunity for anyone who's in the audience who is not on the agenda to come and speak, come to the mic and speak and to bring forth anything that they'd like to address to the Board. So this is someone, anybody not on the agenda. I think that's you. Yeah, if you could just introduce yourself and...
So, my name is Andrew Black. I own a property at 6 Church Ave off of West Street. I've been operating a plumbing business out of there for eight years. I lived there when I started the business. I've since moved and still own the property. I never really did much research to see what the zoning was. I'm completely encapsulated by business. I have 90 acres in my backyard. You know, there's a brook in my side yard. Basically, I now am stuck with a renovated building. I'm no longer doing my own thing. I have almost 6,000 square feet of useless space if somebody else similar to myself can't move in and use it for what I intend to, they use for. Basically, I couldn't, I can't sell it for what it's worth ever. I can't, I'm stuck with a rural residential property, which is literally on the zoning map, where there's only me and my neighbor and then we're surrounded by business. So, I'm not really sure how it got skipped over. It's almost like reverse spot zoning where I've, should fill in the gap that rightfully should be business, I think. Also, I know 91, when that came, it cut off a large farm, so this structure makes zero sense for that two-acre lot, or under two-acre lot unless it gets some sort of use, small business-wise. It's basically a storage shed for hay or vehicles of some sort, but nothing can really run out of there. So, I've tried to rent it for small business use and everybody runs because of the rural residential.
Because it's not zoned.
Yep.
Just not, no, so generally, public forum, one is we generally don't have a back and forth of something because it's not on the agenda, and so we want to make sure we can get it on the agenda so to talk about it. We can also talk about it in between, like I can email or give Gerard, who's happy to give you my contact information, and we can talk about it.
Yep.
To just talk, and also because this is the first, you know, we haven't looked at the zoning map, and I'm not sure exactly what we're going to be looking at here. So, I'm happy to continue the conversation with you.
That sounds good.
And there are lots of different parcels.
I just wanted to give my face in the room and bring this up because it really hasn't been an issue since I've been using it personally. And now that my business is closed, I have a great building that I've dumped a lot of money into over the last seven years and I, it's pretty useless.
What's the, what's the address on Church Street again?
6.
Thanks.
All right, yeah. Sorry, we can't have a little bit more of a discussion with this, but...
No worries. I just wanted to get in here and get that...
Cool, yeah, and Gerard...
You know, just on the radar, basically, for...
Yeah, and I'm not sure if Gerard has your, yeah, if you want to get on a future meeting or we can talk in the meantime and decide if we want to be in the next meeting. But Gerard, if you could get my contact information or something after this, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else here for public forum? If not, make motion, will public forum be closed and we'll move on to the formal discussion? The joint meeting with the Select Board to vote on a new member for our vacant board seat. So, it's my understanding how this works, we have, we'll discuss a little bit amongst ourselves and then make a recommendation to the Select Board, and then the Select Board is the body that's appointing this position that's fulfilling Bob Wagner's seat now that he's moved out of town, or almost moved out of town, sad. And this position will be in effect until May, and then this seat's up anyway, so. Now, take a moment to, we had two applicants to, that applied. One is Eric Petras Van Gill, who lives on Cronin Hill Road. And the other one is John Jeffress from 15 Bridge Street. Are those both of you here? Yes, okay. Thank you both for coming tonight. Do we want to read the letters or should we just talk more about what we're thinking or have them come forth? What, how are we feeling? Do we want more information from anyone?
This is completely new ground for me, so...
Yeah, this is new ground. I haven't done this either. Last time that the Planning Board did this was for my own seat, I think, so...
I mean, my thought is, if they'd like to speak, then I'd like to hear them.
Okay.
It's up to you, though. I mean, I'm good with that.
Yeah, if each of you just want to come and introduce yourselves and give any more extra context as to why you're...
Before that, have you guys seen these letters?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't need to redundantly read them to you?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind coming down, if there's anything you'd like to say, you don't have to...
You're welcome to speak or not speak, as you...
Alphabetical order, or...
Yeah.
My name's John. Some of you know me. Lived on 15 Bridge Street for the last nine years. You can say your name. I know some of you from our kids knowing each other. Basically, that's how I know all of you. I was told there was an opening on the board. They needed somebody to come help and serve. I said I would do it. Sounds interesting. I think I have skills that could help, and I volunteered to do it. I don't have any prepared campaign terms. I would serve diligently and honestly the town of Hatfield if given the opportunity. That's all.
Great. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? You know what, I'll ask the same question. Are you interested, would you be interested in continuing on after the temporary or you just want to...
I would have questions about, you know, elections and all that, the rigmarole that would be involved. I was told there's a need, we need somebody to help. I said, I'll be glad to do it. That's as far as the discussion went.
Okay.
If it's, if I can continue to serve, I would be interested, unless, you know, you guys really beat me up doing road tap session and I run screaming.
One never knows.
From the board. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric.
Eric Van Gill, mine, Cronin Hill Road. I've been kind of hanging around the Planning Board for a few years now. I think they know me well. I'm not afraid to rattle the cage. Yeah, perfect opportunity to kind of jump in to answer your question. Do I continue after the election? I don't know, but if I can, and I don't know if it's doable also because of my work schedule. It depends on the remote access ability. I know that's, that's an issue. So, that's it.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now it's time for us to make a recommendation.
Well, if you'd like me to start, I approached John...
Okay.
To, about this job, because I know, I've known him, I know he's an intelligent person, and I think that his background in the construction industry and his knowledge of zoning and other variables surrounding that could be an important asset to fill the gap that Bob Wagner has left. And that's why I approached him, so obviously he has my support.
Okay. I can comment, yeah, I think, you know, Eric, I don't know John, but I know, we all know Eric, because he's been coming to meetings, at least probably since 2019, pretty regularly, I would say. Yeah, and I can see, you know, sometimes we've been adversarial, so I would see him potentially being on the board as maybe a good thing to, maybe more solutions oriented. But also, you know, due to some of the adversarial comments and too, I don't, you know, maybe would not necessarily be helpful for the Board, so I don't know. I have mixed feelings about, about, about that, but I don't know any, anything about John, but I do appreciate his construction background and project management background because I think that would be helpful for, for the Planning Board, so. And I, and I appreciate Eric's passion and, and attendance, honestly, because probably one of the only regular attendees of our Planning Board meetings in the last couple of years, so I appreciate that.
I also want to say that I'm a huge fan of, of public discourse on things, and I look forward to discussing things with you because we have, we have, we agree on a few things as far as the bylaws go, especially the ones that you're concerned with, and I think they need cleaning up, so.
I'm excited about the whole master plan, or comprehensive plan committee redoing all of the bylaws because as each project we go through, we seem to see opportunities to tighten them up. Yeah.
So, just looking at these two letters, my opinion is that John may offer us a broader sense of background and may offer us a larger potential benefit to the Planning Board with his experiences in construction and things like that, especially around the fact that we're getting a lot of applications now for people to construct and reconstruct and deconstruct things around town. So, I think a construction background right now is a really good thing for us. We, we don't have that presently at all. Mike is, Mike is pretty much not available most of the time, and with Bob gone, we lost a lot of expertise. So, I'm leaning toward somebody with a broader background than Eric. It's just my opinion.
All right. Well, sounds then, like at least, you know, both of you for, for John and I, like I said, I don't, based on the letter, I would, I would support John, although based on Eric's showing up and activity in the town, I would support Eric. So, I don't want to see non-committal to either, but it sounds like it's going to, with the two of you voting for, if we were to vote for John, I would feel like that would probably be our recommendation then, so.
I would agree with that.
Oh, I guess that would be recommendation then for, so we have to do something official or is it...
A joint vote of both Boards to appoint.
Okay.
But the recommendation is...
Doesn't have to be official.
The recommendation doesn't have to be a vote, right?
Right, the recommendation is not a vote.
Okay.
The both, both Boards must vote to make the appointment.
Okay, and is that us taking the lead on this? Motion to vote?
Can I just say one thing?
Oh, yeah.
Please.
I really appreciate both of you putting your names in and you're, you're both people I really like and respect, and, and I'm really glad that you both were interested in this very much.
I also want to say thank you for both of you. I know both of you, and I know either one of you would be fantastic on this Board, and I do appreciate you both putting in for this. As far as I'm concerned, the Planning Board sort of makes a decision because they have to find the person that will work with them for the remainder of the term. But, but if either one of you don't get selected, I strongly suggest to run at the next, in May, run a campaign. That would start like in February, you start getting out there and getting your name out, so, I mean, that's another option if either one of you are not chosen. So, I hope you continue trying to be on part of the town, and I, and I do appreciate you both because I think, I think highly of both of you, and I think you're both excellent candidates.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you. All right. Motion. Anything else?
There would need to be a motion.
From our end?
From your Board.
I make a motion that we choose a candidate to be Bob Wagner's replacement for the rest of this term.
Do you have to recommend who?
Oh, oh, I recommend John Jeffress.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have to vote.
Okay.
It's a joint, right? Because we do it all at the same time.
I'll make a motion to...
We just do it all at the same time, I think it's a joint.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to go with the Planning Board's decision on who they've selected.
Second.
All right.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, John.
Yeah, congratulations, John. Eric, thank you very much.
And we do get to, and we do get to further our discussion, too.
Yeah, later in the agenda.
I have another meeting.
Oh, I make a motion to adjourn the Select Board.
Second.
All those, motion made, is that going to be further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, it's Brian's fault we have long meetings. I just want that noted.
On the record.
Thank you, Marty. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for coming tonight. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, off to Halle's birthday party. Well, birthday to our family, she's eighteen to Barbie.
All right, where's our agenda?
I would, yeah, I... John, do you plan to stay for the rest of the meeting or, okay, because there's just, we're just talking.
I'm in the way.
Hmm?
Yes, I'm in the way.
Because the last agenda item is discussing our next meeting date because it's not going to have, be the first meeting, first Wednesday of the month, and so getting your input on when, what that, when works for you also, I think would be helpful, so, unless, otherwise we can stick to the regular scheduled agenda. All right, so the next hearing, meeting, agenda item is a public hearing on the amendment for special permit application for 164 West Street, a storage facility, SV Properties LLC. Because we do not have a quorum to make a decision on a special permit, we aren't, we are going to open the hearing and vote to continue it onto our next meeting, whenever that meeting will be, we will discuss that after. And then by then, hopefully, we'll have four of five members at, at the meeting so that we could continue with that application in that process. So, I'm gonna officially make a motion to open the public hearing, and I'm going to read the notice. The Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on October 5th at 2022 at 6:00 PM in Memorial Town Hall. Applicant SV Property LLC is seeking to amend their special permit, which was granted by the Board in 2021 pursuant to Section 4.27 of Hatfield zoning bylaws. The applicant would like to add additional modular units to their self-storage facility at 164 West Street. The complete application is available for inspection at the Clerk's Office in Town Hall during office hours. So...
I make a motion, we continue with this till we have the adequate number of Board members.
Second.
And that'll be our next, any discussion, that'll be our next meeting.
Next meeting, yep.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The public hearing has been continued until our November meeting, or maybe not November, but our next meeting, whatever that may be.
We should try to get it in November so we can take care of that.
Yep. All right. Next is formal discussion with a public inquiry to discuss bylaw 7B.5M with Eric here. He reached out at our last meeting during the public comment period, which is why we couldn't really have that discussion there, asking about this particular, I'm just pulling it up, 7B.5M that says, quote, "No odor may be noxious or cause a nuisance or impair public comfort and convenience. Marijuana establishments shall incorporate order control technology and provisions," end quote. So, I reached out to our attorney, our town attorney on this because, you know, smell can be subjective and, or what's noxious can, you know, related to that could be, could be subjective, so I was curious from Attorney Mullins' perspective on what illegal reasoning for some of that would be. I also asked, asked him to talk about, I asked him about his previous correspondence with us about how some of our marijuana bylaws, they like lump our indoor grow stuff and our outdoor grow bylaws like kind of together and don't distinguish what's indoor and what's for outdoor, which makes it confusing.
Which they are now realizing and dealing with. The Cannabis Control Commission.
Oh, okay.
The new head of the Cannabis Control Commission is looking into some of those things. There was an article about it recently.
Yeah, so basically, yeah, by going through a couple of these different marijuana applications, we have noticed that there have, there could be ways to tighten up our bylaws, so I brought that up too with Attorney Mullins, and he replied back saying, what did he say? He said, he said that it's up to the building inspector to decide what level of odor runs afoul of the bylaw, and anyone dissatisfied with the decision can appeal to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And then for this, his, the second sentence, which is related to that marijuana establishment shall incorporate order control technology and provisions, I would not quote, I would not necessarily say that it is inapplicable to outdoor growing facilities. Perhaps there are measures that marijuana growers can take to minimize the odor of even an open-air facility. So, I sent that to Eric, who was this, was the public, person from the public who inquired about this, and then he came back suggesting that our town attorney is incorrect by his interpretation by saying that some of our Massachusetts state laws say that air pollution control should be enforced by police, fire department, or Board of Health officials acting within the jurisdictional area hereby authorized by the department to enforce as provided for Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 111, Section 142B, that any regulation in specific reference to when that provision is cited. So, and then also has some thoughts on the legalese that the lawyer used regarding the second sentence, I would say, of that sentence. So, I just wanted to recap what happened between last meeting and this meeting for the record, for the public, and I want to pose a question to you, Eric. Yes, like, we can, would we, we'd like to, would you like to discuss this further? How would you like to discuss this and like, what would, I guess, like, we can discuss this and have different opinions on this, like, what, what is like the proposed solution here, I guess, is more what I would like to try to get to, try to get to that part of the discussion.
I guess the proposed solution is, what I want to point out is we need to clean up the bylaws before any application can be even looked at. Because, as I said, especially the last sentence, you know, first of all, we don't allow indoor grow in Hatfield, which I think is, is very unfortunate because I think...
We do allow indoor grow.
We do.
Yeah, we do.
We do. We have not permitted anybody yet because they have not come with the proper places and things, that, that, but it is available in this town for somebody to get it permitted indoor grow.
Yeah, it's like its own section on the table.
We'll take it up. But anyways, outdoor grow, we shouldn't allow any more applications because it clearly says, you know, they shall use odor control, and as we all know, they cannot. And shall is mandatory, and it's not an optional, you know, as, as Town Council said, you know, it kind of sounds like maybe they should, could...
It's an option.
Option, no, shall, we're very clear in the bylaw, they shall use it, so they must use it. There's no ifs and buts. That's it, you know, and it's unfortunate, our bylaw is that way. I say unfortunate, but I think it's great, but I, we got to clean them up. So, basically, what I want to do is the Planning Board cannot accept any applications until a lot of these bylaws are looked at and cleaned up because, as one of the other Board members said, they need cleaning up. And I'm willing to help, I'm willing to throw my two cents in, but there, there, there are too many loopholes, there are too many big gaps, and this could totally take a life on its own, and they're going to be popping up possibly everywhere. So, I, I think we kind of need to tighten it up.
Yeah, and so this is a good time to bring this up because I think if we were, the way the process for updating any of our zoning bylaws or rezoning a particular parcel, for example, would need to come towards, to town meeting, and then town meeting would be voting on this. And so, the timing, I think, like I said, is, is good, maybe, hopefully not too late because I think we need to like have placeholder language by February-ish. I'm just being mushy with the dates because I'm not entirely sure, but I know we need, if we know we want to put an article in there, it needs to be at least said, known with article that we're going to do this or not by around that time, but we can put in the language kind of closer to, to the May town meeting. And yeah, I mean, like, this is debates other towns are having and communities are having, like you see Northampton wanting to put a limit on the number, you know, they're debating putting a limit on the number of pot shops that they want to have. I don't know if that's the, the kind of thing we want to do or if we want to like take some of this language that clearly has been somewhat of an issue for us and over the three applicants that we've had over the last few years, and recommend and work with maybe Pioneer Valley Planning Commission because we do have some money to work with them, with our Town Council, but that would be something, you know, we would have to decide if that's how we would want to use those funds and do that, and take a, because, you know, marijuana is new to the Commonwealth and everyone kind of adopted the same types of bylaws, so if you see this, there'll be, you know, someone say, oh, that's the same language. All the other towns use too, so it's kind of, everybody's kind of learning as they go along, which is like, not, in some ways, not great.
Can I ask you, can I ask you a straight-up question? Is your, is your intention with the question on this bylaw, is it, is it to clarify so that the process can become smoother, so that people who are applying to grow, so the whole process can be clearer for everyone, or is it a way for you to debilitate the whole process?
It's not to debilitate, but I want to give the opponents a, a stronger voice.
So, what...
And now it's, it's, there's so much gray area that it could sway either way, and like we saw in the last project, I pointed out in the letter that I sent, that to me, there were plenty of points on which this application at least, you know, maybe not should have been denied, but at least put on hold until we clean things up, but unfortunately, I think it got, you know, it got approved. I don't think it was quite all right, but...
Well, it, it got it...
Debilitate? I don't know, no, not debilitate.
Eric, it got, it got approved because every I, every T of their application fit every requirement of both this town and the State Cannabis Control Commission. We had no right to deny their opinion. We had no right to deny their application, and I, I, you, you need to understand that when things fit, we do not have the right to say no arbitrarily and capriciously. We would be sued, and that's what happened on, on Cronin Hill Road. We were told to let that process play out because it was never going to happen, but if we inhibited it playing out, then we were going to be sued by the applicant.
We could have been, yes.
I guarantee you, we would have been because of how much we harassed them, but that's inconsequential. Right now, the Cannabis Control Commission is the one in control in who gets permits, where they can grow, what can be grown. Right now, that's not a problem in this town.
So, on that, what odor mitigation is Straight Road using for their outdoor grow?
What mitigation is who using?
Odor mitigation is Straight.
7B.5M, I forgot the exact...
It's outdoor grow, they're not using any.
Yeah, we, yeah, that was...
That's exactly my point because they should...
There is no way to mitigate the smell outdoors. Period.
But our bylaws state they shall use odor mitigation.
But that's, that was referring to indoor grows.
No, it doesn't say that.
It doesn't specifically, and that's, and what, what he's saying, what he's, this, this whole thing with the smell, in my opinion, is, is, is subjective, and...
Right.
And I think that, I think that I expressed when, when we approved that last grow, that, you know, I had looked into it, and this was, this was the grayest area for me. He's hit on the grayest thing for me because it does not specify indoor or outdoor.
Right, so that's what we need to clear up.
No, no question in my mind, we need to clear that up. The thing for me, and let me explain my decision-making on that, when, when it comes to noxious, I mean, noxious is such a strong term, I don't...
I interrupt. That refers to the first sentence because was a member of the Fire Department asked for the opinion, had Board of Health or Police Department, because per Massachusetts law, they are the ones that can enforce it, so they are the ones, their opinion counts. The Planning Board may have their opinion, I totally get that, but by law, they're not the enforcer, so the enforcers are Fire Department, Police Department, Board of Health, any member. So, they were not asked on their opinion, what is noxious or if it's noxious, that was completely passed by.
And has anybody ever complained to any of those agencies, and have they gone out and seen what the problem is and then come back with a decision?
They will.
They haven't. There's been no interdiction by any of the agencies you're talking about. The Police Department was all in fair favor of the project that's going out by the Go Farm. They didn't have any problem with it whatsoever. So, if they had a problem with the smell ahead of time, they may have stepped up and said so because this has been an issue around town, and I'm sure they're very aware of it, but they have not approached us with any legal issues about what we're doing as far as granting permits.
Yeah, I think to Jimmy's point, like, lack of, I mean, and this is the conversation in Northampton, too, is like lack of data, right? Like, so, I think like if we could see the number of people who have complained to whether our town or other towns to related to noxious odor, and that's what I was asking our attorney for, like, what is the legal precedent around smell, and he didn't really respond back to that particular question, so...
And I think reason people don't complain is because, what it's going to do. It's, it's in place, it's not going to be shut down, it's not going to be taken away. The worst thing is they're going to get a $300 fine, which is, you know, that's still...
Or they'd come back before the Planning Board and we would, yeah, try and...
So, no one complained last year with the noxious smell of the rotting potatoes all over town. No one complained to Swazlowski or...
It, it, it's in place, it's not going to be shut down, it's not going to be taken away. The worst thing is they're going to get a $300 fine, which is, you know, that's still.
Or they come back before the planning board and we would, yeah, try and.
So, no one complained last year with the noxious smell of the rotting potatoes all over town? No one complained to Swazlowski or some Marowskis who were growing and leaving their potatoes to rot in the field? No one complained about that smell because it's agricultural. So, I'm not sure where we get the differentiation in smell. If you grow a field of cabbage, it's going to stink around harvest time. It's just going to stink. Is that more noxious than growing marijuana? That's a, that's a subjective answer, question. So, I mean, a lot of this is very subjective about what's, what's an offensive odor and what's not.
I think that's, I think that's kind of his point, you know, where, who's, who is the person making that subjective decision? You know, where does that come from, I guess, is the, is the question? Who, who says what noxious is?
And right now, no one's willing.
Well, that's where, that's kind of where we're, we're great.
Yeah, but I'm not sure that if we create a bylaw, anybody is going to live with it. I mean, the fire department's not going to want to go out and look at smell obnoxious, what, so, is this noxious or is it not? Neither the police department.
But if they have to, if we, if a general law, then they would have to. I guess it's kind of clarifying, like, okay, our attorney said that a zoning enforcement officer is, is actually the body. And then I think, I mean, part of me also, like, I appreciate the inquiry too into this, but every time we ask our town attorney, it's like, cha-ching, cha-ching, two. So, I don't, I don't know if we would feel comfortable or would want to like ask for the clarifying question about the enforcement piece of this because that might just be an, like, see, like, another avenue for, for someone to complain related to odor versus related to other bylaw. What's the term? Potential questions to other pieces of the bylaws or complaints to other pieces of the bylaws, that would be to the zoning enforcement officer? I don't know how you feel about that.
Is Kyle the zoning enforcement officer?
Yes.
I think the problem is, is outdoor grow and it, because it just stinks, you know? And I think the town of Pittsfield, I believe, don't quote me, but I believe it's the town of Pittsfield, basically said, that's it, too many hassles with it, we're stopping outdoor grow applications, period, we're moving it all indoors, it's all controlled and nobody knows. And it's all good. And I think personally, that's what the town of Hatfield should move by or move to indoor grow, that's it. Literally problem solved, in my opinion.
Yeah, there, the problems with indoor grows is just the power usage and electricity usage.
Right now, the Cannabis Control Commission is promoting outdoor grows.
Because 10% of our energy being used and consumed in Massachusetts right now is going to its indoor marijuana grows.
Right, and, and so that's why they're promoting it. And, and they obviously feel that that's the way to go for the good of the state.
And I'm going to, you know, take something that Bob has said, you know, as someone who worked for, for American Farmland Trust, preserving a lot of farmland, working with farmers, the spirit behind outdoor grow was, is, was looking at it in a more like, this is something you grow on the ground, we're a farming community, it is not an agricultural crop, however, it is, it is a crop. And it's something that the spirit behind it was the reasoning for passing and putting the bylaw in place this way, which none of us were on the board, I don't think at that time, was behind the spirit of it being a farm community, something you grow and could be a good supplement to farmers, which is what we see with our last applicant, and diversifying and keeping farmland, farmland. Granted, you have a fence around it and a bunch of security stuff, whatever, but that was the spirit behind it. It wasn't to like bring more noxious.
And, and, you know, in the past, as you know, nobody really complained about the Main Street project because that is a perfect location. It really is, you know? And, and there's always the people that are opposed to it, no matter what. But I think that's a perfect location and I think that's what we need to, as a town, nail down to make sure we find some of these other perfect locations or more suitable locations versus, you know, just because they have a 500-foot radius away from the nearest structure, plop it down. I, I think that's, in my opinion, that's wrong because the odor travels more than 500 feet. So, and I, I think that's, that's ultimately what I want, that what I want to achieve is as a planning board town, we need to tighten this up.
Yeah, so I guess going, I'm now thinking, you know, if we're done with kind of discussion pieces, thinking about options of what to do going forward. So, there's a couple of different things we can do. One would be, I would recommend, I guess, again, going kind of back to what you were saying about, you know, what's the intent and the spirit behind some of these suggested bylaw changes? So, and like, what is the, what would be the solution in your mind? So, I think either we want to like pick some of, like, take our marijuana bylaws and like really overhaul them, that might be a big project that we probably can't get done by town meeting, to be quite honest with you. But if there was something like a bylaw you wanted to, a potential town meeting warrant article that you would want, and maybe the community members or folks have got people that feel similarly as you would want to propose to us and bring it to our next meeting or maybe even the meeting in December? I mean, you could even say like, I want to, we should ban outdoor grows. Like, that's something you as a citizen have a complete right to bring to us. That'll be up to us whether we want to endorse that article or not, or bring it to town meeting more or not. And then it's something that you could bring to town meeting. If we wanted to just pick like a couple little bylaws, like, and tweak some of the language to make them sharper and cleaner and clearer and less gray, I think we could do, easily do that before town meeting, but definitely not like a whole.
Well, I would like to, I would like, you know, I mean, I think that he's kind of been the spearhead behind, you know, pointing these things out. And I, and I want your opinion on these things. So, perhaps, you know, beyond this one, and I, and there's a couple that I saw in there that I thought needed cleaning up too. Maybe you could kind of, if you, if you're willing to spend the time, go through and kind of, kind of pinprick the, the points, you know, and maybe we can decide what really needs to get fixed and what doesn't. And we can go forward with that.
Yeah, and then, like I said, like, we, that would, you know, depending on how it all is worded and stuff, we would have to run it, either way, we would have to run it through.
By attorney?
By our town attorney before it even hit a town, a meeting warrant anyway, town meeting warrant anyway. And like I said, we would, that, we would vote whether we would want to endorse this or not endorse this at town meeting, leave it up to the public to make the decision. So, you know, that's the whole point of town meeting is anyone can bring anything and, really vote on it, which is one of the great things of town meeting. So, and that's what's something that we said back through the last two process, processes too. And so, I think it would be appropriate for you to suggest something and we could use probably limit, like, some of our legal time with the lawyer to like sharpen some of it if you want to bring the first initial solution or whatever you want to propose. I think that's, that would probably be the good next step for us.
Go hunting with a rifle instead of a shotgun.
Yeah, does that sound okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Cool. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just make sure to get it on the agenda with Gerard or whatever if it's for next meeting or two meetings from now, but, cool, thanks. And I appreciate, like, appreciate you being involved in bringing forward because I know other people feel this way too about some of these bylaws and we'll see what the public thinks about them if we bring it to town meeting, right? Where's my agenda? All right. Last.
Next meeting, what are we doing about the next meeting?
So, John, our esteemed cataloguer of the meetings here, is going to be out of town. Good for you, John. Vacation, hopefully. Oh, okay. He'll be out of town at our regularly scheduled meeting, which would have been November 2nd. He's out for that, it's that whole week, John, is my understanding. So, he could either do even the week before or the week after.
Well, the week before puts us two meetings in this month.
Yeah, I, I think it depends on whether we could meet that or not, it doesn't matter to me.
What about the 9th, John?
Does the select board have a meeting on the 9th?
How about the 8th?
The 8th is election day, so I don't think this room would be.
That's not a good idea.
No. We could, we do a Thursday, Gerard? The 10th? And then I think the 11th is Veterans Day, so that would be off the table probably.
You good for the 10th? November 10th? John, you okay?
Thursday, November 10th.
I have to figure out the Wi-Fi here because I'm trying to look at the sports schedule.
Oh, yeah, there's no service in here. There's no service here. Right.
All right.
All right, so, our next meeting will be Thursday, November 10th. And that's when we will have the continued public hearing for the special permit for 164 West Street and anything else that might crop up. And maybe a continued conversation with Mr. Black. All right, we have minutes to approve as the last order of business. Which I did read.
I skimmed it, I didn't see anything. That doesn't mean anything.
Thought I saw something, but where was it? Yeah, did we hear anything back from West, the hotel on West Street, Gerard? Are we still waiting to hear back on them?
Yeah, they're looking into the, last I spoke with Jeff Swire, they're looking into your suggestion, the development.
The transfer development, right, by law?
Yeah.
But, so we're still, they're still charging ahead, but it'll be a little bit.
Yeah, they haven't, they haven't submitted anything, yeah.
And then I think it said with the Steeble property, that probably would take a few months, but would probably.
Yep. I'm, I'm acquainted with that a lot.
I think these minutes were great, Gerard.
Yeah.
The, the centum updated ones. Any motion to, for the?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of September 7th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?